Okay, everybody, it's six o'clock. I'm calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember.
Then call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Here.
Schimmelberg?
Present.
Mayor Mountain.
Here, Sunshine knows.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published on the Thursday, December 23rd, 2021, as issues of the Bellevle Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bellevle Town Hall bulletin board, and copies are on file in municipal clerk's files.
After the pledge of allegiance, I'm just going to ask everybody to please remain standing. We're going to honor a moment of silence for a municipal employee that passed away today, Mr. Danny Rafferty. Now we do pledge allegiance.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is executive session. Oh, I think the manager wants to interject here for a second.
Yeah, members of the council, I would suggest, because we do have potential lengthy executive session, if we do not have any guests coming in to speak to the executive session, and it's just the council, and we do not take any action, instead of asking all our residents to leave in the beginning of the meeting and then come back in, if we could just go straight through the meeting and do the executive session at the end.
Just stand. Motion to change the meeting. Order meeting.
Motion.
Stay here very late.
Second.
No action is ever taken at an executive session.
We're not going to take action afterwards?
Exactly what the Board of Education does. There would be no requirement, exactly. There would be no reason to take any kind of action.
Yeah, makes sense.
Do. Just a motion to amend the... I need a motion to amend the agenda. Put executive session at the end? I heard a motion.
And second.
I heard a second. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes. Somebody just remind us to go into executive session. Next item on our agenda is the report of the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we have a busy agenda tonight, so I will try to be quick. I have a couple of interesting points. Our water bills are going out this week, and inside the water bill, we have a very informative insert. If the council, if any members of the public can get here. But this insert talks about the Bellevle Home Improvement Program, and residents that are eligible can receive $22,000 of work on their home, up to $22,000. And the income qualifications, right on the front page, has an example of a family of three making $77,000 qualifies, a family of one making $60,000 qualifies, a family of five making $92,000 qualifies. So this program, people really should be like knocking down our doors to get it. Right now, we only have 14 applications in the works, and I think, you know, we probably didn't do a good enough job of getting the word out, but this is a great program. People can really take advantage of it. The next thing I did want to report is very happy to say that we were chosen, and we may have reported on this just briefly. I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed because we have some meetings going on. But we were awarded a grant from the Department of Community Affairs in Warwick University. And it wasn't a monetary grant, but it was a grant for us to develop a strategic marketing plan for Washington Avenue in a commercial district. And we all know Bellevle doesn't really have a downtown, but we do have Washington Avenue. And this grant, again, is not money, but what it provides us, it provides us services of professionals that come in, they do surveys, they actually walk Washington Avenue, talk to the business owners, and then they form an advisory group. The advisory group is made up of local officials, institutional representatives, local business owners, community members. And Councilman Cazarelli is very, very helpful in this. And we have a call this week. We have another meeting on February 7th. And some exciting, hopefully, an exciting plan will come out for Washington Avenue. So we're very happy to report the progress that is being made on that. And the last thing I want to report on is that we are up to 700 lead line replacements that we are required to replace by DDP. We just received the recommendations and comments from DP on a specification. Those comments or recommendations now get added. Final plan gets submitted and will probably be out to bid probably within 60 to 90 days. Right at the end of the year, the federal government passed a $1.2 trillion infrastructure plan. And that infrastructure plan is over $15 billion earmarked for lead line replacements. So we're going to be working very closely with our representatives, our grant right people, our grant writers, to see how we can be included in that infrastructure improvement. So that's something that we have to put a lot of energy and effort into it because government had recognized that this is obviously a national problem, but certainly we want to get off that ship. Certainly open for questions and comments.
Question for manager?
Yes, sir.
No, I have little questions, but through the manager, I know he's not here tonight, but our DVW director, Bobby Walter, and his water crew did an excellent job. It was one of the worst situations I've ever seen when we had a water main break when it's literally zero degrees out.
Coldest weekend of the year.
Pumps were freezing, literally, as they were turned on, they were freezing. Guys were being sprayed with water when it's zero degrees out. It was miserable. That's one of the hardest jobs we have in the town. I want to give them a little food out.
Thank you for that, sir.
Good job, yep. Okay, next item on our agenda is the report of the mayor. So just to pick up where we had the moment of silence today, we had an unfortunate death, a very young death, very tragic death, of one of our municipal employees, longtime Bellevle family. So condolences once again to the entire Rafferty family at this most troubled time. Moving on. So the manager talked about the lead line replacements. I did want to bring that up. I saw that we're going out for bid. We're going out. I know Tom Hertz is going to be doing some different things. It was mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I think maybe one or two meetings ago, we are doing a 12 or 14, not week, the state is doing a 12 or 14 million dollar project on Washington Avenue. Since we are mandated to replace X amount of lines, that might be something that we look at doing those lines rather than having to dig up Washington Avenue after the state spends 12 to 14 million dollars on it. Is that in the realm of possibilities to explore?
Tom Hertz is, he's very aware of the same concept.
Yeah, okay. Speaking of that, it's my news. So the manager did mention, I have reached out to our congressional counterparts. I've spoken with both Congressman Series' office, who still represents us. I even had a wonderful conversation with Mickey Sherrill.
Mickey or Mikey?
I had to ask her, is it Mickey or Mikey? And they're both well aware of the fact that NORC got a lot of money and a lot of press during their lead line issues, during their lead water issues. They replaced, Mayor Baraka did a great job replacing every single lead line, 18,000 of them in like two years, which is insane. And Bellevle really didn't get much help federally. We got mandated to replace a couple hundred, which cost us several million. So it's something that they both are well aware that Bellevle's looking for our fair share of that infrastructure money, especially as the manager correctly said, bulk or a substantial portion of that money is absolutely earmarked for lead line replacement. We're here in northern New Jersey, and both our current congressperson and our future congressperson are well aware of the township's needs. This morning, I had my mayor's call, which is now once a month at the county. They decided to go from weekly to bi-weekly to now once a month, signaling the end of, you know, the emergency response needed for the COVID pandemic, which is good. So much so that Joe D had mentioned to all the mayors today that while the three facilities that the county has stood up will remain open, they are scaling back because they're seeing an end of the wave, and they're seeing less people asking for tests because this most recent strand isn't as serious as people initially thought, I guess. So they are scaling back a little bit, but all three facilities are certainly still open. Snow removal information is definitely on our website. Please check that out. I know there's potentially a storm coming this weekend. The library is picking up news. The library did receive a $150,000 grant from the state. That was a great grant to get. Traditionally, there's matching funds with that. The library had reserves in capital, and that is basically $150,000 worth of free money for eight large window replacements, including the roof finally. On our website, check it out, we have a part-time position open for recreation leader, something like that.
Yeah, they're called recreation leaders.
And there's also an account clerk position open on our website. Also on our website, home rapid tests are available. And last but not least, I'm glad to see this flyer. We've been meeting and talking about this program for a while, the last couple of weeks, anyway. But this is a program that has been in existence a couple of years. Just to get my ducks in a row today, I had done some homework on that. This home improvement program, first of all, what residents need to know is that this is funded not by the feds, not by the state, not by the county. This is funded by local developers. Every single developer doing the project in Bellevle. Development is not bad. Development's not evil. Every single major development going on in Bellevle, they have to put 2% of their money into a fund. If it's a $50 million project, 2% of construction costs go into a fund. I did my homework today. 2017 into 2018, this program had $10,400 in. And that's basically because Bellevle, for a substantial portion of time, didn't do any new development. Today, we stand with $1.6 million in there. That $1.6 million represents $22,000 for taxpayer, or for homeowners, I should say, that's in need of repairs. And the income requirements are not that low. They're absolutely not that low. I would venture to say they're middle class. They're not that low. $22,000 free money as long as you stay in a house for five years. $1.6 million of free money to get out. Bellevle residents, homeowners that need to improve their homes. Fantastic program, not funded by taxpayers, but funded by developers. Past events, we had a Martin Luther King Day flag raising last Monday. It was a very good success. And we also had a COVID vaccine distribution event on January 13th. Where in the January and February, not much happening as far as community events, but Tuesday. February 1st is the beginning of Chinese New Year, and most of you know that that means something special to Bellevle residents because we were the first ever Chinese New Year celebrant on Eastern Seaboard. This is the Year of the Tiger. So February 1st, Year of the Tiger, Chinese New Year's. I believe our library is standing up at least one event, if not having some different things in display. And also February is Black History Month. Outside the mayor's office, we'll have the traditional banners that we hang celebrating Bellevle's Black History Month. And also, I believe, once again, the library is planning an event for that. That's it for my mayor's report. Next up is the approval minutes.
Regular meeting of May 25th, 2021.
Microphone, please, to kind of park.
Oh, sorry. Regular meeting of May 25th, 2021.
Need a motion?
A second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Take no part.
Schimmelberg?
Take no part.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes.
Communications.
A request received from the Bellevle Soccer Association for permission to use the municipal stadium two weeknights for training and Sundays for games from March to June 2022.
So, and this comes up every year at this time? We just accept that as a communication and send it off to recreation?
That is correct, sir.
Next item we have is ordinances.
Ordinance number one for introduction. An ordinance to amend or revise or ordinate to the Town of Bellevle, Chapter 8-16 Handicapped Parking Spaces.
Motion introduced.
Second.
If a motion made in second to introduce, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance on the table. We do have our professionals here with us today. So entertain, hopefully, a motion to remove that off the table.
Make a motion to pull another one off the table.
Second.
We have a motion made in second. This is a vote just to pull off the table. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes. Now, this is an ordinance for second reading, public hearing, and final adoption.
Correct.
Okay, so let's read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance authorizing execution of financial agreement with MPJ Enterprises LLC pursuant to NJSA 4821-1 at SEC concerning real property located at Lot 9103, Lot 1.
Need a motion to open for public hearing?
Motion.
If we have a motion made in second to open public hearing, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes.
Public hearing is open for this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have anything to say just on this ordinance, once I call on you, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, Mr. Frank Tantone. Make sure that microphone is on, sir.
It is.
Yep, Mr. Frank Tantone, 29th and Prospect Avenue. I assume this is De Great Lawn?
No.
Franklin Avenue?
No, we're on, we're on. We're on, ordinance on the table.
Right. What property is this? Said 9103, Lot 1.
No, that's not secret. Oh, 9103, Lot 1. That is on, not the exact street it's on, but it's not Franklin Avenue and it's not the Great Lawn.
Well, if you don't know where it is, how you gonna vote on it? What's on here?
What's on here?
Ordinance has it on the address.
The actual location doesn't really matter to us much.
What's on Whatchung Avenue?
Would be a new development, a new world state structure. Six family house, six family building.
Are you sure? Because this number, are you sure it's not the school one site?
I'm sure.
All right. And what's going there?
Six, there is a six unit building already built.
And so what are we, oh, this is the financial agreement?
Yeah.
Not a tax abatement, right? Yeah, we're going to subsidize, thank you.
Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Mr. Trump.
95 bill. I'm not sure. If this is the abatement for the five years, big 20, 40, 60, 80, 100%?
Yes.
Okay, just for clarification purposes, for some reason, I thought it only applied for that program that you had for homeowners that get the, you know, that they do renovations to their property. I thought that only applied to homeowners.
No, in September of 2020, this council voted unanimously to put the entire town in area need of rehabilitation, not.
Rehabilitation, right.
Rehabilitation. That qualifies, new construction qualifies for a five-year abatement in order to spur.
Okay, no, but I just wanted to clarify case because I thought it was only for the homeowners.
No, it's okay. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing and move to final adoption.
Motion.
We have a motion made in second to close public hearing and move to final adoption. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved.
And that's just for the council, though. That's something that we have to do for every application. Next item, gentlemen, thank you for being here today, but I think we had it covered. If you guys want to sneak out, they're not needed for executive, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment. Need a motion to open public comment?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion made in second to open for public comment. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli? Depeany?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schimmelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mountain.
Yes. Okay, we're in the public commenting portion of our meeting. Any resident needing or wishing to speak has five minutes. I asked you once your address, just to come forward, use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Caribou Bank Down, 287 Fairway Avenue. My question is, there was a lot of, there was the flooding on Fairway Avenue, and a lot of people are right after the flooding. Thank you, the fence finally got fixed at the park, which I think the children really appreciate. But what's the disposition on all the pending things? They were supposed to clean up the, clean up the cemetery. It was supposed to be looked at, I guess, and the golf course was supposed to be looked at, both of which are now developing around the water and building it up so that more water will come onto Fairway. The river has not been cleaned. And the park is still kind of in shambles, except for the fence was fixed. That was good. So what's the disposition of all these things that promises were made?
You weren't here at the last meeting.
No, I wasn't. You're right.
When all those answers were actually given. So I'm glad you're back here today. Passaic Valley's probably going to come out in the spring. They don't typically jump in the water in December and January for a cleanup. So they told us that.
Did they give you a hot date? I'm sorry.
No, they have not. The manager's probably in better contact with them than I am.
You should be an email, shoot them an email, see what kind of response we'll get. I'm sure they're not going to give us an exact date.
DEP was on site. We did walk DEP. And at the last meeting, I talked about the fact that DEP issued a cease, I don't know if it was a formal cease and desist letter, but they did send communications. We have a copy of it. Clerk has a copy of it. They did send a communication to the cemetery to stop construction. So that has, that's, that letter's got to be over a month old. They sent that communication. That had nothing to do with the current stuff they were doing. They found some open permits and things that were never settled from 10, 15 years ago because they are doing a deep dive. That deep dive is going to take some time. I've been in contact with our senate office, which is the office that arranged this meeting with us. Every week or so, I send an email to them, ask them or call them, ask for a follow-up. The last follow-up we got was this communication. The clerk has a copy of. If you want to make an offer request or ask the clerk tomorrow for it so you can see it for yourself. That was done, and I think they're scheduling a second site visit. And as soon as they give us that date, I'll announce that date.
And the golf course?
The golf course, I'm not aware if they've done anything with the golf course or if they found anything wrong with the golf course.
Golf course is currently, and I wish Gary was here because they're still digging up and the embankment on the side of the river.
They did look. So when we were here, we were in Gary's backyard.
And it's gone higher.
That was some repairs, we were told, that was some repairs they were doing from the, was it Ida? From Ida and where the grounds keeping, but again, it's not my decision to decide.
They have one on from the river to my house, which is about six houses. And the embankment by the river looks to me at least three to four feet higher. But they've reached the dirt.
They absolutely did notice the fact that even Gary's property was far lower than some of the other stuff. So they, it's a government agency. All we could do is make calls and email and follow up. But we were pleased with their site visit, and we were pleased that they actually went back, did their homework, found some open permits from the cemetery, issued a cease and desist, my words, I don't know if it was a legal cease and desist, tell them to stop doing what they were doing until they can come back. I'm not sure when they're going back, but we can definitely follow up.
And what about any kind of construction on Fairway to prevent the water from probably there?
I don't know. I'll refer to the manager.
Has anything been done with that? I know we discussed that, you know, months ago at this point.
Specifically?
Just to divert the water out of Fairway, I mean, you know, they were thinking, you know, we talked about widening it, deepening it, dredging it, possibly using the park for some runoff, I mean, you know, retention pond, something. Something needs to be done.
DEP has, again, don't blame the messenger. DEP has drawn a line in the sand. They will not dredge. That's something environmentally they do not do. They don't want to dig up the sediment. I'm not justifying it. I'm only telling what they've told us. They will no longer put Gabby in walls either. They don't believe that that really works for channeling purposes. It's going to be an ongoing debate and a fight between us and DEP for sure.
And so just, and so is the fight continuing? I mean, are you guys, you know?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're waiting on them to get back to us.
Okay.
We're on it.
Okay, thank you. I'll be back.
I'm wrong. Anybody else? Back, ma'am?
So I'm not a resident, but I do work in the Town of Bellevle. Right on Washington Avenue.
Just give me your name and address.
Yes, it's Dominic Bergantino and 563 Washington Avenue, the color bar. So we've been having an issue with the kid, Adrees Poem. That's the autistic kid that's been terrorizing the businesses in town. It took 20 minutes for the cops to get here the last time. He hit me with ice chunks. He threw a full can of soda at me, told the cops he's going to punch me in the face. I'm afraid to go to work anymore, to be honest. I work by myself sometimes. We're actually changing our hours, so we're not, so they are so late by ourselves. But at this point, all the cops say is there's nothing we could do. He's autistic. But there's got to be something somebody could do because he's going to hit somebody. He's already thrown ice chunks. He spit all over my car multiple, multiple, multiple occasions. He's dented my car. He threw a log at my car. My emblem's broken off. And I've called social services. I've called disability protective services. I've called disability, but I'm not getting any help in this department. So I'm not sure of like what's the best steps to do. Honestly, the poor kid is not getting taken care of by his family, and he's coming into town and he's terrorizing the businesses. I know he's already terrorized Fat House on Washington Avenue. I know he's already terrorized Michael's Ross Common as well, color bar in Bellevle. It's been multiple locations. He was arrested. They let him back out. But then when he does get in trouble with the police, they bring him to the hospital and let him out within three hours. And then he's angry, and the cops have even heard him saying he's going to punch me in the face, he's going to kill me, that he's going to mace me. And I work by myself. I don't, like, I don't know what else to do.
Well, first of all, I'm sorry you have to go through that. Thank you for coming here. I know that you've had interactions with the police. In a minute, after you're done, I'm going to have the chief just address you and us kind of collectively about that. But I have seen altercations between this individual and our police.
Yes, he even spits at the cops. It's sad.
The chief, you're going to hear it from the chief probably in a few minutes, but the state, we don't handle, the state does not handle either autism or those that are prone to violence, I should say, not necessarily autism. Any kind of mental health help, the state doesn't do well with that, and our police department is often handcuffed with that. None of that should really matter to you if that's not your problem.
No, and I feel like now the police are just so over dealing with him. Once you say his name, it took 20 minutes to get to 563 Washington Avenue. The police station is right here. And the more.
They could have been anywhere.
The more and more.
They don't come to the police station.
The longer and longer they take. And if they hear Adrees, it takes longer. And I get it. Like, everybody doesn't want to deal with him and everything like that. But I'm afraid that he's going to...
I was actually there personally and arresting him on one of your... And he... Let me start off. I feel very sorry. He likes to pick me. He seems to...
So chief, I'm going to have your comments on the record. Let me just... Thank you for coming in. Just the way it kind of works, it's not... I'm going to have to have the chief just stand up and address us all collectively. But thank you for your comments.
Mayor, we do have some developments with this person. As she said, it's terror... He's terrorizing the town.
It's been going on for a while.
Two years.
We're... We bet that we're lacking in our society with emotionally disturbed people.
That's what I was trying to say before.
We're lacking. But we have made some progress since our last incident with her. We met with hospital officials and we're coming close to where there may be commitments involved and stuff. In the meantime, we are arresting him. We're bringing him in to get him off the street.
When you arrest him, does he stay off the streets for longer?
Well, he hasn't been around. On the last time we saw him, he was arrested.
The last time, they said they're not going to arrest him. He's autistic.
Because we're making headway with the hospital. So we are going to... We're in the direction of commitment.
Ma'am, are you the owner of the Color Bar?
No, I'm...
Your employee?
So you slept the hard way. I hope you remember. I was on one of them when I was backing up the office.
Chief, maybe we could have detectives just visit them to see if they can look at some security or something that makes them feel safer. Any recommendations they give?
We're in good contact. Well, it's fine.
Yeah. It's no issues. I'm just afraid.
Well, I don't blame you. I don't blame you. But I just want to know, isn't the moment we are close to any commitment?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I wish there was a better answer we can give you, but we're obviously... Chief is...
I hope he gets help. Like, I don't want nothing wrong with him.
That's where we're headed now.
It's the family that's doing the disservice to him. He's autistic.
She's worried about that.
It's such a disservice.
The family is getting paid from the state and just letting those on the streets. Again, it's not our... We can't fix that.
It's not...
But we're trying.
I'm not saying that...
No, no. Not without trying. We're sharing that with the state agencies.
Anybody else who would public comment?
Mayor? There's some issues I want to address about some possible violations of law on the township. I received a video that was posted on Facebook of the deputy municipal clerk at petition signing at Brick's. Is that true, Mr. Mayor? It was petition signing. According to the Facebook page, it showed a video of the municipal clerk standing with the petitions. If I saw the video properly and what was told to me, are you aware of that?
If you saw the clerk doing that, no. I'm not aware of it.
Okay. That's what... I wish I would have brought the topic of the... It was on Facebook. Somebody sent it to me. Okay. All I'm saying is, from my experience, my entire life, clerks are not supposed to be involved in any shape or form of any type of political campaigns. If the clerk was there, then we have an issue with the elections. The clerk should not be reviewing your petition or anybody's petition. And somebody else should be doing that in all fairness for transparency because that is a possible conflict. And I'm going to review the... The what do you call it? Video again. But if that's the case, this matter has may fall under the S.H. County Superintendent of Elections and the Attorney General's office. The clerk cannot be involved in any campaigns. I mean, you... First of all, all of you, all seven of you, all point this individual. There needs to be transparency. I don't know if it's true, but based on what I saw... I know what I saw. But I'm going to review it again. But if that's the case, this council has to sit down and discuss this in person now.
Thank you for being there, Sergeant.
Then it's the second matter. It appears that you may be in a relationship with another town employee, which is the court administrator. But that is your personal life. I wouldn't even go there. I'd stay away from that. Now, rumor has it that this court administrator also attended your political, you know, petition signing. Is that true? That's not true. Okay. Because if it is true...
Mayor, do you have any business to talk about?
Yeah, it is. This is important though. Because we need trans... No, no, no. Please.
It sounds that way, though.
All we want is transparency.
Personal vendettas.
We want transparency. That's a violation of the law.
Transparency is... If you ask me a question, I answer.
Yeah. Well, okay. So as far as I'm concerned, there may be a possible two ethics violations here. Okay. So let's go back to the water thing, the lead thing. You talked about... We... I think you've bonded $3 million for lead pipes. What is being done with that money that's in the budget, if I remember correctly? Was the bond floated for that prior to all this money coming out?
So we were mandated by the feds to replace a certain percentage. I think it was 7%, which came to about 400 lines. So that bond was for the first 400 that we did.
So how much did you spend on it already?
I don't have...
Oh, you don't have the... But that money... So what are you going to do? I mean, should we continue spending the money if we're getting money from the feds and give up the bond? Why?
We didn't get any money from the feds yet.
Not yet. I know that, yeah.
Keep it all famous, Chris. I'm going to get it. Promise.
Okay. No. Because what I'm saying is... No. The reason I brought up the $3 million and then you're talking about the other issue here, with the feds giving us all that money. Because it's annoying when you see all these streets being paved and you know they need lead pipes and public services just paving these streets, which are going to have to be ripped up again. I hope you don't pave another street until those streets are, you know, corrected with the proceeds from the federal government.
Anybody else who would public comment?
Phyllis Frantantoni. Happened again yesterday by ShopRite. There was an accident and it looked pretty bad. Car was banged up and being towed away. I think that you ought to contact the state about getting that light there sooner than later before somebody gets killed. But there's been many accidents there. Some guy I know whose car was totaled. And there's been many people trying to crush the street and they can't get across the street. So I think you would have called the state and just... I forget her name because I spoke with her too, and tell them to get on it and get a light over there before you really have something very, very bad happening. And the Jergens property, okay? Where the Wawa is and the storage facility. Whatever happened to the three acres they were supposed to give the town? For our... I thought it was for a school.
Oh, I've never heard of that.
Yeah. It was said here at a meeting that it was for a school or some kind of recreation thing. They were going to give the town three acres back a while ago.
The only thing I was aware of is that they were going to donate a portion of the back property for Gabby... How many? Morris Canal Walkway? Greenway. They were going to donate a small portion of their property for a walkway. That's the only thing I was aware of.
I'll have to go back and look because I remember three acres that they were going to donate. And as far as when you say the... With these apartments, they will have no kids. Already, they have in the high school 162 more kids. If we get more kids in this town, and I'm not against anybody having kids, I don't know where we're going to put them. You keep saying the millennials, they're not going to have kids. Are you going to send their bedroom and say, uh-uh, you're going to have a kid? You can't do that. You can't... You can't say they're not going to have kids because they're going to have kids. So that's a horse.
Mr. Frantantoni?
If you don't cut me off at the end by speech, I'll give you a little compliment.
I'm falling for it.
In regards to Garden Avenue, I mean Fairway Avenue, I've been in my friend Gary's house many times. They're not just fixing some storm damage. I have seen dozens and dozens of dump trucks bringing dirt in there. So if you had some water damage to your golf course, you rake, you dig it up, you straighten it out. You don't bring in dozens of loads of dirt in there. They have definitely built it up. And so what happens? It comes on these people, especially Gary's the first house there. He gets the bulk of it and then the rest of the people get it. So you better go up there and find out what's really going on. Now, the Resolution 8, the Great Lawn, how much are we going to buy that for?
No, that's not Resolution 8, Mr. Frantantoni.
18, I'm sorry.
18. Sure, I'll be corrected. But I think we have to hire professionals to do everything not to exceed $10,000.
There's no... That's just a preliminary investigation into the eminent domain.
Okay. Well, I pressed the prior council. This is going on for years and years and years. The county should have never sold it. It was in the sale that that parcel was in the redevelopment area only to be used for open space. So the county got the money. I agree that we should take it back, pay the guy. But the county should put up the money, not Belleville taxpayers. It's their fault. I have all the documents. I have a file on that three inches thick. So I had the ad, which I gave to the former town manager and all. The buyer should have never bought it. The county should have never sold it. We should not be on the hook to buy it back. But I want it back as open space. Now, in regards to, like my wife said, you keep saying, all these new apartments, we won't have kids. It won't cost us extra services. Could we already have it all? Well, I don't know if any of you go to Hope Oak. I haven't gotten there in about eight years because you can't freaking park anymore over there, right? It's a zoo. But this was just in the news. They're in big trouble. You had to build a $250 million school. Their enrollment for K-5 has increased 57%. The freshman class of '21, '22 is 60% larger than the class of 2021. The demographic study forecast 30% increase in the next six, seven years. Let's go to today's paper, The Observer. I think you have it in the hall downstairs if you want to read it. "Fourteen more harassing cops are needed. As the pace of new development continues to explode, the towns take themselves to bolster public safety." Mayor Feig says there are more people in town now. For that reason, we've got to have more police because there are more places to patrol and we're closer to north. There's also a need for beefing up fire... In the fire department thing, right? So they're going to hire up to 44 ranking fire police officers, up to 30 and up to 20 to 28 fire personnel and 12 fire captains. So it's no more what I'm telling you in my opinion. I've seen it all over. My... Two of my sons live in Bluefield. Once I got $2,000 increase with all that development, it looks like a concrete jungle up there, you know, with all there. This has got to stop. It's unsustainable. A lovely little beautiful village is being destroyed. So the...
You're almost out of time, Mr. Frantantoni.
Okay. Well, one more thing...
We can get to the compliment then.
One more thing, then I get to the compliment. I keep saying, you know, somebody has got to stop the Department of Public Works from filling these excavations with gravel. To give you an example, I mean, I've been a contractor 49 years. I've watched public service film. When you fill a hole with gravel, you've got voids in the gravel. So all the vibrations, the carts and truck riding over, the surrounding dirt fills in the gravel right across the street. Not even two weeks ago, you patched a hole, six by six hole. It's already sunk. A hundred feet up, another thing sunk. They got... And then we pay... You bring all the dirt down Public Works and use it shovel. Costs us a lot of money, takes dirt away. We got the dirt. It takes out public service dust. Put it back in. Why does somebody... Because not somebody needs this, but because I brought it up publicly so many times with the director sitting in this room. Nobody's paying attention.
You need to wrap up with Mr. Frantantoni.
This is insane.
The manager will answer. I need to wrap up, though.
Mr. Frantantoni, and I know you've been driving this point home for a while. Our town engineer disagrees with you, respectfully disagrees with you. What I'm going to suggest is that I will set up a call or a meeting so you can sit down with our town engineer. Every time you bring this forward to the council, I have this conversation with our engineer and our superintendent.
Please do that, Mr. Manager.
Several reasons why you can't use the dirt that you take out.
How come Public Service doesn't?
We can have that conversation offline.
And again, I do need to move on, Mr. Frantantoni.
How come I've done it for 49 years?
You bring the concern forward. We review it with the town engineer. He's a paid professional. We take his professional opinion.
Well, just a few years back, I did an operating room in South Orange. We dug big trenches, six feet deep, ran new water lines and new shorelines, the same dirt. We had different...
The manager's going to serve a meeting with you. I do need to...
And I don't agree. I've said publicly. I don't... Tom Harris deals with paperwork, right? I've been in the trenches, physically known it.
We're going to move on, Mr. Frantantoni. Thank you.
As far as your compliment, finally, I've been telling you, we've got to redo this. You haven't done cleanly reline, not only this crew, but for 30 years, you haven't done another one.
I like the compliment because I agree. I like it.
On Washington Avenue, before the state does, so we have to dig it up. Maybe you'll finally listen to me. Let's see if it actually gets done.
Well, I don't have a say in that.
Tom Harris has been negligent on that. I keep saying, he's like, oh, Mr. Harris is going to clean the reline.
Thank you.
We haven't seen anything done.
Anybody else who would public comment? Mrs. Fleischer? Mr. Sheldon? Start or end with compliments?
A few things before I get to my main point for tonight. I had asked the other week if you could start to make a podium available here, just as the Board of Ed does for its public speakers, just as a courtesy. It would be a nice accommodation. Minutes for May of 25th of last year were approved tonight. Could you please make every effort to get those online? When I checked the website last week, minutes haven't been added since early March of last year. In particular, that meeting, May 25th of last year, was the public hearing for the budget. If you look at the video, for whatever reason, a lot of the video is missing. And I would like to have the record for that particular meeting. And I would like to have the record for that particular meeting. I had asked at the last meeting, I know I rambled on for a while, but I wanted to know who was ultimately responsible for making the decision not to charge one of our trustees in October 2020, when she was arrested for DUI, to not charge her criminally. I never got any answer. I filed an open request. I'm hoping that some measure of an answer is forthcoming. In regard to the home improvement program, I put in an open request at least a week ago, maybe closer to two weeks ago. I have asked for the actual financial details for that program because the only what's only spoken about is the level one part of it, the $22,000 program for existing homeowners for home renovation. I want to see the total, the total financial agreement. And I've asked around, nobody in the community seems to have that document. So, if you could please expedite that, it would be appreciated.
Thank you.
That's, that's my initial remarks. And what I, just to follow up on what Mario introduced, he, one correction, he kept saying our municipal clerk, it's not the municipal clerk, this Kavanaugh is stickler for all of her obligations, ethical obligations. It was the deputy municipal clerk. And as far as the court administrator is concerned, I can give you the whole document if you want, it's a very long one, but the canons for judicial employees issued by the New Jersey Supreme Court. If you go to page 42, 1094, I'll give you the exact citation of Mr. Martino, doesn't have it already memorized. It says--
Are we allowed to have them permitted to discuss municipal employees?
I just want to read one part of the ethical canons. It says, "The municipal violations Bureau Clerk may not attend meetings and events sponsored by a nonprofit association that is prominently affiliated with a local politician." Now, as the video record shows, she, the, our municipal, our violations Bureau Clerk was directly participating in the Three Kings event. And who were the sponsors for it? Your civic association and the Bellevue Republican Committee. It's a clear violation of this, so action is to be taken. Some people, some higher up level people have said that suspensions are automatically warranted here, that it's up to the discretion of the town manager, but an investigation needs to be done and possible penalties. Now, what I really wanted to speak about tonight, recently going through some recent news--
Yeah, about a minute left, Mr. Sheldon.
All right, I'll make it, I'll try to rush. In The Observer from December of 2017, you, this is about the battle between you and Mr. Kennedy about your residency, and you're quoted for saying, "I voted in Belleville in May 14, May 14 municipal elections. I had not yet moved to Lynnhurst yet." Well, as I had briefly pointed out, in, on September 13, 2013, you appeared in this very room before the planning board, and you were sworn in under penalty of perjury. You were asked to give your name for the record and your address, which is 434 Park Place, Lynnhurst, New Jersey. So, you are telling, under penalty of perjury, that you're living in Lynnhurst in 2013, but yet you tell The Observer that you hadn't moved to Lynnhurst until 2014. That's clearly falsehood. In fact, if you look at your--
Yeah, 20 seconds, Mr. Sheldon.
Yeah, I know, you've got to rush me through this.
I'm rushing.
When, if you look at all of your online records, you were living in Lynnhurst and Park Place from 2011 through the end of 2016. The next address that's posted for you is in Belleville, 24 Bernice Road. There are no other addresses listed for you in numerous websites, which are all, you know, have, they get their records from numerous legal databases. Let me just have another few seconds here.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
You, you have clearly perjured yourself multiple times. In fact, in--
I do need to wrap up.
I will, very quickly. In June of last year, do you remember what you told Mario Dros?
Mr. Sheldon, your comment, your time for commenting is now over. Thank you.
All right, well, they assume going to come when, it's not me interrogating you, it's going to be a prosecutor.
Thank you.
And they're going to--
Do we have anybody else to probably comment?
And the penalty of perjury--
Mrs. Fleischer in the back.
Eighteen months in jail for each offense.
Thank you.
Make note of that.
We were on such a positive note, weren't we? Mrs. Fleischer.
I'll be nice. I have notes. I'll be nice.
Good evening, Carmella. Fleischer, may I throw you three mentions?
Leave the compliments first.
I'll think about it. Well, actually, yeah. First, I would like to thank Mr. Iaccone, the Public Works Department, perhaps in the hall that I mentioned at the last meeting. Nice shot. It's in a new year, I'd like to see the council go off the right foot, so I'd like to address a few things that are on my mind. I've been attending for a while, and the one thing I've seen when residents come up to speak to the council, sometimes people are on their phones, people are not, in my opinion, they're not paying attention, or they're on their phones, they're, you know, stepping out. If we can get, I, I have all eyes on me now, that's great. I want all eyes on every resident, every single second of every time. So, you know, you, you know, you had an eye, you know, we had a little fun with each other last meeting. You were saying that you can't blame the prior council. You were on the prior council, correct?
Twenty years ago.
Right. We were all a lot younger 20 years ago. You know, not me, but, yeah. You know, the old Belleville, the new Belleville, you know, the things that, you know, the council and everyone's trying to do, that's great. There should not be this great divide between old Belleville and new Belleville. There's just Belleville. End, end of story. And that's it, you know? And we've been attending for a while, and it just seems that time after time, the same questions are being asked. When we, when, you know, about the firehouse, you know, when we're harassing the fire, you know, everybody about the firehouse took us three years. I know I asked multiple times about the light over on Drummond and Union. And I understand that is a county road, and I've asked everyone to reach out to the county. Has that been done to anyone's knowledge? Because there needs to be an era there, right on the corner, near, especially, I'm kind of surprised it really isn't because it's right near a school. I would think that would be top priority, doing it that way. You know, and just, you know, we've, we've had our, we've had our issues, things like that, but I'd like to get everybody, you know, just moving forward on a positive note, the things that are being done in the town. And also, I understand this is being faced, you know, livestreamed on Facebook and things like that. I know I'm not crazy. I know when I was in high school, I'm not going to say how many years ago, we used to come down to film the meetings. I, I brought it up, you know, to Dr. Tomko also. Can we get a communication going that students can come down sometimes and film them and the, the meetings can be broadcast on the television channel? Because that's the whole idea of having a television channel in the town. You know, I mean, Facebook is lovely, but not everybody has access to Facebook at all times.
It also streams on our town website, though.
Right, but again, sometimes people don't have access. You know, it, in today's modern age, I understand it's a lot of, you know, it's understandably, you know, shocking that people don't have laptops, but some people still don't have laptops, you know? And different things like that. And I saw that you posted that Main Street, you know, is going to be in, develop, in, you know, when there's a new, you know, buyer that's coming in, what is going to happen to those, if you, if you know the answer, if the council knows the answer, what is going to happen to those existing businesses at there that are there now?
So, it's, as you correctly said, it's basically private. It's got nothing to do with us.
Okay.
But I believe that there is some transition time, and there is also relocation expense that's being paid by the purchase. But again, it's private, so I, we don't really have any--
Got you. No, I mean, I would like to see, I would like to see that area obviously cleaned up and things like that, and I know they're building another, you know, warehouse there because Main Street at night is a little scary. And hopefully, they can put up the lights and things like that. So, just like I said, hopefully, we can get, you know, going further, just not be as cranky as people in the past. Thank you.
That goes for the audience members as well.
Absolutely. That's why I said old Belleville.
Anybody else to probably comment? If not, I'll, any motion to close public commenting? Your motion made at second to close public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DeTena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumal Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Mullen.
Yes. Resolutions. I just want to pull six.
I'd like to pull number 19 for discussion.
Six, I'm sorry, Steve for six?
Six, yes.
Tommy? 19 for discussion.
I'm good. So, I'm going to entertain a motion to move the consent agenda with the exceptions of number six and number 19. We have a motion made at second to move the consent agenda. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DeTena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumal Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Mullen.
Yes. I have number six. I'm going to move six. I just want to roll call. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we? Motion made at second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DeTena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Take no part.
Trumal Burke.
Take no part.
Mayor Mullen.
Yes. He's 19. Make a motion. Your motion made at second, discussion?
Yes.
Will you pull it off?
Yes. Okay, I just, I just, sitting council member, I just wanted everybody to be made aware of that I just received this two hours ago and read the revised agenda. Obviously, there has been a quorum prior to this meeting because the resolution on the table, this one right here, the monies have been committed and the solution has already been implemented. So, the council has spent time and money and resources to upgrade the town network and hardware throughout the township. Now that we have standards and we have upgraded the technology, and tonight, we see before you a costly fragmented solution. By the way, the services, I reiterate, and the solution has already been committed and it's, it's here, right? I don't know if, we have a lot of IT council folks here, I'm a deus, and I don't know if they already know, but the solution that's being implemented per the FCC in 2019 is to remove all analog services by the end of August. So, let me explain what analog services are. It's all telephony. It's a phone number. It's when you have a modem, all types of things like that. The FCC, Verizon, and the carriers are moving away from that stuff because they're now running on fiber. But yet, the solution where, that's already been paid for, and I'll give you a minute to numbers, and already been implemented, is going to go away end of August, September. Okay? So, if I'm not mistaken, based on the resolution, there are two phone lines that are coming in, one for the public, which is here, and then one for the council. That we pay, or will be paying, that's already committed, is approximately $15 per month, per line, $100 a month, already committed. Okay? The hardware, the lines that actually come to feed that from outside are cables. They get, we got charged one time installs, at least 500 a run. Now, we need to go buy a phone, or two phones. $500 a phone, $2,000 one time charge. Edge or $100 a month for 12 months, or however long you want to, or this was supposed to be played out or part of. Again, going backwards, old technology, take the money and invest it where it should be. So, it makes no sense, being technology, I'm surprised with the people here, council people, council members, I should say, that have this technology, knowledge, would want to go backwards and not know about this FCC rule in place. Because it came out in 2019, and oh, by the way, the Belleville Public School knows about it, and they have already started implementing it to move forward. The network that we put in place is the, is the, of the core to actually move from older technology to new technology. So, and that's disseminated through the whole town at each location. So, this is the reason I wanted to have the discussion of, and, and why I will vote the way I vote, because why are we even voting on it if it's already been implemented? They've already had it. There had to be, it had to be taken for this to happen. I don't understand it. So, that's why I want to have the discussion, and I will vote my way.
I just want to clarify that I'm understanding what your concerns are in regards to this specific wording. And so, we are voting on a phone number that, on two phone numbers that are part of the old technology. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then, I guess for the people that are not aware of the specifics of what this is, adding a phone number option for people to call in, whether it is the public or whether it is council. And, okay, so that's what I wanted to clarify. So, my concern, and I would like to share that, you know, in, in the past, due to the nature of my job, I have made use of this conference, and being able to call in is, has been helpful because sometimes my job takes me, you know, to Korea, like that one time, right? I was able to call all the way from Korea, but I was committed to being here and voting. It was 13 hour difference, but I did it. So, but I do have concerns on the wording because it says that, the phone number for the municipal council says municipal council who wish not to attend the in-person meeting. However, in regards to, excuse me, in regards to the public, it says members of the public who cannot attend the meeting. And I do hesitate to vote with this wording because I, there are times when I wish not to go to work, but that's just not a choice. So, I, I have a problem with that, the fact that we are using the wording, and I don't know, maybe the, you know, Ms. Martino can, can guide me and clarify what this means. You know, who wish not to attend, I mean, what does that mean? Are we in the middle of a public crisis? Is there a timeline? Just the fact that it's just because we wish not to attend, it seems to be a bit trivial and irresponsible if, if we wanted to, you know, to, to word it that way. So, I would consider a phone call or a, some type of a virtual option according to what we have already established, but also this wording. It, it does concern me in terms of what it says.
To answer your question, I mean, it's called integration. We sat here, we invested money into--
Yeah, for sure.
We invested money into what we had here. Granted, it was back prior to COVID. Take the money, well, we can't take the money now because it's very, it's money, it's money that was spent already committed, right? And thinking about it, looking at solution and implementing solution before acting was my point. And just coming to find out about it two hours ago and, and digging all this up and, you know, it's why wasn't it a discussion? Why didn't we look at it and say, hey, just gent? So--
Through the chair? Dan, you're up.
Just, we did discuss this, Tommy. In fact, we've been discussing this for a couple of weeks. And part of the challenge was, I know John, Marie, myself, sometimes we're not well, sometimes we don't feel good, but we want to participate. And I believe the three of us have participated in close to 500 meetings in the course of the last 18 years. We're here to make it so that we can participate, and I was told, you know, we couldn't call in, we couldn't do this, so we want to be able to participate. We also want those that don't feel comfortable coming out in the middle of a pandemic to participate as well. And that's kind of what this was about, you know? That's what I was hoping for, so. I know Marie and John were there.
Yes.
I, yeah, I mean, it's understood. My only, like Council Graziano said, usually things are, we throw on a work session, we discuss it, just so that, let me reset the table for the public that's here and listening. We're discussing re-noticing our meetings, even though we just voted on re-noticing our meetings in December, and we advertised the meeting schedule for the next six months that gets us through July 1st. We took that vote in December. We've paid the notice, we've advertised it all, it's all been done, and now there's a resolution that appeared on our agenda two hours ago to change that in case, as the deputy mayor rightly said, members of the public who cannot attend, but council members who just choose not to attend. I venture to think that we're not going to see a bunch of council people here over the next few months. And, you know, you understand, we're, as I said in my mayor's report, the county literally today said, "We're coming out of this thing." They're pulling back vaccines and testing. New York State just ended the mask mandate. It seems like the rest of the world is coming out of this thing, and Belleville is going back into it for some reason. And I respect the, the personal preference of all my council colleagues. If you don't feel comfortable, if you want to wear a mask, if you're cautious, I have absolutely no problem with that. That is absolutely your prerogative. But then again, I'm also in Belleville, we're all from Belleville, and we see each other bump into each other at different events, and people are there at different events, at different public gatherings, sitting at tables with people that aren't their family members, and eating dinner with them, and got their hands around them, and taking pictures at, at political events. And I just have a problem swearing that where, you can't come here for two hours and, and like we ask every single municipal employee to do. I don't know what the manager's response would be if a municipal employee said they want to work from home now. This is our job. This is our responsibility, which is why I haven't missed a meeting in three and a half years. That's really my two cents on it all.
Anybody else? No? We're going to need a motion to move it. If you want to move it.
We did move it.
Oh, we did move it. Second, we're in discussions, and now we're going to do a roll call.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DeTena.
No.
Graziano.
No.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumal Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Mullen.
No. Next thing on our agenda is new business? Anybody?